He stung a wire after he started to clear the land, after. So, there were some trees that were, you know, that were on our side of the property that were taken down. I didn't make a big deal about it, but there were some trees that were on our side of this wire. It was through a wire from one point to the other, from point A to point B. It generally is pretty straight. You know, not that I had a surveyor out there or anything, you know. That's what it was. And there were some trees on our side. Now, whoever we had clearing the land, you know, they don't know. It's because, well, there had been a fence there, which, who knows what happened to that fence, but there had been a fence there. But, you know, that's what, and so, but I, I didn't make a big deal about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Zuckerman.
Thank you very much. I mean, I do know that if you've, that is a covered insurance claim under a landscaping policy. Now that you've made that statement, Mr. Zimmer, do you want to?
I would like Mr. Klein to address that. He has first the analogy. He was there, supervised the busts. Did you get to address the council?
We took down some trees that were on the lot line. Mr. Walker supervised it and was there and marked the trees and took them out, had them in charge.
Are you saying they were on the, her land, or are you saying they were growing on the line?
If there were any, if there was any argument about whether they were his trees or our trees, we marked them together and we supervised when they came down and we took them down at no charge. The trees that came down were dead, were dying, and we took all of the buck thorns out. He was there with my tree guy and he supervised it. We marked the trees and took them out. They were on the property line. There were a few trees that were on his line, he marked it and we took them out at no charge, which is what we're doing here.
Okay, can I ask a question about buck thorns? What is it about buck thorns that are bad?
About 20% of the tree dies every year. So, it's kind of a noose in the tree. It's not as majestic as a real tree. And it tends to be a world predator. Quite a bit of that, a lot of that.
Okay, well, I think that that's, that you've, both of you have answered it clearly for the council. I think we have a good point of view on it, and I hope that two of you can work out everything between you. Thank you, both.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify that property is not in the city of Wooddale currently, and if there's any, any problems with trees that are taken down that aren't truly taken down or anything like that, if they would just file a report, it will be properly investigated by the county sheriff and appropriate action taken.
Any other comments? Will the minute taker please call the rule on this?
Alderman Police?
The motion is to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And when will that be?
October. October the 15th.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Canape?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mrs. Zuckerman. The next item is, did you raise your hand?
No.
Oh, okay. The next item is a report and recommendation on the contract approval request for zoning code rewrite, zoning map update, to also include unified development code between the City of Wood Dale and Land Vision Incorporated. Mr. Clicker.
Yes. Yes, before you, tonight, you have the final contract for our agreement with Land Vision. If you do have specific questions regarding the contract, either myself or Mr. Ron Lance from Land Vision is here to also introduce himself and, and Land Vision as a company and answer any questions that we might have.
Question, Mr. Alderman Lewitan.
I, as you know, I'm an insurance agent, and I've, I read Article Five Insurance, and it looks to me like it's antiquated, it dates back to maybe the 70s or before, and doesn't take into consideration the needs of insurance at this time, and I have prepared a rewrite completely of Article Five. One thing, for example, I'd like to point out, you're requesting commercial general liability, workers' compensation, automobile insurance, and optional umbrella, but nowhere in the papers are they asking for professional E and O, and I would recommend that professional E and O be a requirement. You wouldn't go to a restaurant if you knew that they didn't carry completed operations because you could get sick after you leave. You wouldn't buy a toy unless you knew the manufacturer had, had coverage for manufacturing products. You wouldn't go to a doctor unless you know he had malpractice insurance, and you shouldn't go to an intelligence provider without knowing that he had professional E and O. I'd like to give you an example. On the July 24th letter that you have attached to this, there's example, two examples of intelligent error. I would first like to mitigate what I say by the revised one of September 11th, they corrected it. But on the July one, it says Phase One will take place from September '07 to October '07. Phase Two will be October '07 to December '07. Phase Three will be from December '07 to May 2007, which is an intellectual error. And Phase Four will take place from May 2007 to July 2007. That is also an intellectual error. After 2007 comes 2008. The year does not repeat itself. And I will be the first one to say in the new one, they did, dated September 11th, they did correct the intellectual error. But I do want to point out that that is the purpose of, of professional E and O, errors and omission, and so I recommend that E and O be part of the insurance, and there are other things that I'm recommending. In Section A, you're requesting, if necessary, commercial umbrella of a million, which would take you to $2 million because you have a $1 million base coverage. And then in automobile insurance, it says, including umbrella, you will have $2 million, which therefore they're two contradictory statements because an umbrella is over all underlying coverages. Therefore, we should break it out and put the umbrella as a separate item and say, since in one place you, you say it's at the city's discretion and the other you say it's mandatory, I think you should say both of them, that it's at the discretion of the, of the city. Also, over the last 10 years, 15 years, new forms of, of insurance paper have been created so that now all policies are not the same as they used to be back in, in the, in the 70s and back 100 years. Now, there's claims made and occurrence policies, and I think you should, well, one is not necessarily better than the other. I think that it should be made clear to the city which type of an insurance policy the contractor is providing to us. If it's an occurrence policy, we really have no problem. If it's claims made policy, we might have a problem because if the, if the contractor goes to a different carrier or goes out of business, or switches to an occurrence policy and renewal, and then nothing is covered that's discovered after the policy expires. So, I'm recommending that if there, any policy is presented to the city that is on a claims made basis, that they, they put on a deposit with the city a 70% dollar amount of their insurance premium that is a claims made, so that at the end of the policy term, if the contractor doesn't provide proof that he provided insurance with the same company or bought a tail from that company, then the city has the, has the right, if it feels that additional coverage is needed, to buy a tail policy on that claims made policy. I've put this all together in a, in a rewrite that I'll just pass out to everybody, and I would ask that we send the contract back to, to the lawyer to rewrite considering all of these changes that I've, that I've made. And another one I suggest, I want to suggest is that any policy that we accept be covered by the Illinois Guarantee Fund unless the city gives a waiver. I mean, I'm always willing to let them give a waiver if the city feels that a company is strong enough, even though it's not covered by the Illinois Guarantee Fund. And having said that, I throw the thought up for open discussion.
I, I've got that all.
Well, yeah, I put it in writing.
But, how many you got? Are you, now, let me, let me ask you a question. Are you talking now about this specific contract, or are you talking about?
Article Five.
What we're going to be talking about, the zoning codes?
No, I'm talking about Article Five Insurance.
Specifically Article Five.
Specifically Article Five, nothing else. Article Five.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, we have received a copy of, of the comments made by Alderman Lewitan, and we will forward this to the city attorney who drafted the contract for review and.
The contract looks, the Article Five looks like a boilerplate that's probably years and years old, and I think a lot of this stuff would have been complete 20 years ago. So, I think we need a new boilerplate.
Okay, staff, is there a direction? So, I'm trying to remember, did we make a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion on the table to approve.
Well, then I'd like to add.
Table it.
I, I made, who was the motion made by?
Nobody.
There wasn't a motion yet. Okay, when we do make a motion, I will ask that it include Article Five and the revisions that Alderman Lewitan is talking about, be, that be, that go to the city municipal lawyer to take a look at, and if he thinks it's correct to add to it. Maybe have you even sit down with him to understand it as well as I do. Any other questions?
Make a motion, table it.
Alderman Canape?
Yeah, all you need to do is make a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
Table and just send it back to the attorney.
Okay. We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
And the question?
There's no question on motions to table, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you call the rule, please, on that one?
Alderman Police?
So, we, we can't have Ross make a statement or something?
No, we have a ta, a motion to table that precedes anything else. No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Canape?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Uh.
Yes or no?
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
We have a tie vote.
Common?
Four and four.
Doesn't pass. So, table on the rule? Doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass. Reason I voted no, I want to hear what Mr. Clicker has to say, and that's it, basically.
I did show Mr. Lance from Land Vision the proposed language from Alderman Lewitan that he has drafted. He said they would have no problem in complying with that requirement, so I would recommend that we, or suggest that we could just add that language to the contract and approve
I don't mind adding the language as long as the city attorney looks it over first.
Why table it?
That would have been, that's what I was saying, that would have been part of the motion, that he looks this over and makes sure it's correct. Approval upon condition of city attorney's approval of this add-on. No, I'm not sure. This way, it needs, it doesn't need to come back here, correct? Alderman Clow?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we, if we make the motion to approve adding these changes contingent upon our city attorney's review, we'd be able to get this moving much faster than if we wait two weeks for it to come back here, which I'm particularly in favor of. So, I think we can, I think we can implement the changes. I think the fact that we're, that we're doing this tonight would be proof that these changes would in fact be implemented if, if in fact appropriate, and therefore we could, we could move on with, with bringing this consultant on and begin the project.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not positive about Robert's rules here, but I think if we can, Alderman Wesley?
Well, so more or less, with your statement you just said, we're going to have attorney draw it up and not even have the council see it and then just approve it?
No.
That's what I'm getting out of that conversation, does now.
Well, it would come back to us next week with his approval, or it would not, we would vote on it then finally.
Will he have it ready by next week? I certainly can't speak for the attorney, but normally they make every effort to have the information available for the committee, and we would make an attempt to do that and have that ready. If not, we would at least have an explanation, and we would go forward there.
Alderman Coles?
What is the difference if we table it and vote on it next week? Seriously? If, if Pat Bond says okay, the, we can always say yes, and the ordinance will still be okay. He still will have, it'll still go through next week. What's one week going to make a difference? He, he has to read it. He's the lawyer. He has to read it. He has to okay it, and.
Well, I'm going to take a big shot, big shot in the dark here, because I'm not sure Robert's rules when it comes to tabling, but perhaps we can vote again to table this matter? Yes, I'll, please help me out here.
If you motion to table, it has to come back to PZB. If you make a motion to approve with conditions, it can go on to council.
So, I'm making a motion to come back?
Somebody voted no yesterday.
I'm, I make, it's, I'm doing it, I'm doing what happened last time. I'm making a motion for it to come back to the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee at this point. Do I have a second?
Did you vote yes?
No.
Then you can't do it.
Okay, whoever voted yes, would you like to make that motion?
I'll do what you request.
Do I have a second? Somebody else who's, does a second or have to have been?
Yeah, it has to be seconded.
Pardon me?
Yes, it needs a second.
I know it needs a second, but it, does it have to be somebody who voted yes on it? I am not positive.
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm going to take a shot in the dark and say, yes. Mr. Manager, can you help? Please do.
I suggest that a motion to approve incorporating the changes suggested by Alderman Lewitan, and then if we, if we had the motion, we could move forward, we could get it ready. If it was ready, we could pass it. If it wasn't ready, we could always table it until the next meeting.
But we have to get rid of the table that's on the floor and that was just passed, don't we?
It has died.
Oh, that's right, it did die. Okay, that's exactly what we'll do. I'll make that motion as the manager stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition, it passes. Thank you. And I apologize for the lack of knowledge on that one.
Mr. Shaki? Yes, Mr. Clicker? Mr. Lance from Land Vision is here, if you would like him to provide us a short introduction on the company.
Who would, does every, would everybody here like to hear a short introduction? Okay, please. It's Mr. Langer.
Lance.
Lance?
Lance, L-A-N-C.
Mr. Lance, please give us a quick update.
My name is Ron Lance. I'm a principal for Land Vision. I will be working on this assignment, and it'll actually be led by one of our senior principals, Walter Maggiar. Walter was left for vacation today, so he comes to politics, but he wasn't able to be here. I know there were a number of issues kind of raised in regards to the insurance and industry of the company. We've been around since 1991. We're a 15-person startup headquartered in St. Charles right now and second office in Chicago downtown. We handle a variety of projects, all land use and zoning administration type related. We don't provide any other outside services. It's just a specialization that a lot of the other consultants. We represent both on the public and the private sector side, depending on what our plans are. Most of our public sector work, the one that we're talking to, we're talking about tonight, is zoning companies, plan related, as well as being a liaison and interior staff to a number of communities that just don't provide the interior staff. We appreciate the opportunity to be part of this project and think it's a, a direction that a lot of communities have been moving in in more recent times, getting away from the standard straightforward, kind of, Lydiaan zoning, and moving into these unified development ordinances, which combine all of the regulations, along with the labor regulations, from the subdivision codes, from the engineering, water conservation, environmental, kind of, like communities that are really dealing with, in one document. Excuse me, thereby making it easier for the plan review process and for developers coming in to understand what the regulations are and comprehend it in a kind of all-around sense. So, that's the, the approach in talking with Ross and Roger, that where the understanding that the city is interested in doing and something that we've done, we've successful in a lot of, lot of other communities at this point. And we're looking forward to working with you guys to make that a successful project for the City of Wooddale. I'm happy to answer any other questions, anyone may have on here tonight.
Anybody? Mr. Lewitan?
I have no questions. I, my comments were not directed towards the company or the company's reputation, they were strictly directed towards the wordage that we had on insurance needs, and I think they're universal for all contractors throughout the, the city, because different, the, the main issue, the main, the main, one of the main points, or the main point I wanted to make was that different businesses have specific coverages that would never be found in another type of business. And so, a boilerplate is not 100% good sample to follow. We've got to request those specific coverages that would be necessary for the type of business that we're doing a contract with. Thank you for allowing me to make that comment.
Any other comments? So, we do have a motion on the floor, I believe, to?
Approved.
We're done?
There was no motion.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
I thought there was a.
It was just a show and tell.
Just a recommendation, okay. Items to be considered at future meetings, B4 zoning district and the telecommunications ordinance. Are there any other items? Mr. Wesley?
Hey, Mr. Wilson, how far are we with that B4 zoning?
It will be on September 17th. It'll be this Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah, what is the telecommunication ordinance going to address?
Go ahead.
The telecommunication ordinance pertains to AT&amp;T and Operation Lightspeed to allow competition with Comcast, and they passed recent legislation regarding this, which is going to change the, also our franchise agreement with Comcast. Right now, we're waiting for a model ordinance to be drafted that will cover all the requirements to protect the city, so when AT&amp;T comes in, we'll be able to deal with them appropriately and make sure that we protect everyone, and it's, they're on an equal playing field with, with Comcast. They're having a, a special meeting for the mayor and managers on this issue for council members, mayors and managers who want further information, and I believe that if it hasn't been put in your packet, it will be in your packet, or should have been out already. If you would like further information, also the attorney can give you an update. We're waiting for that final ordinance to be drafted.
Thank you. Any other comments? Besides, I'm, I'm sure all of us were disappointed that the state legislature did pass this. Okay, is there any other items to be considered for future meetings? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned.
Public Health Safety and Judiciary Committee, roll call. Everybody's still here, so we don't have to add that. Approved minutes of August 23rd, 2007. Anyone want to make a motion? So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Items, information items, status of red light camera program, Wooddale Road and Thorne.
Thank you, Alderman. Once again, this is just a, a status report on this project. To refresh everybody's memory, it came before the committee in April, we did a presentation. We've got direction from the council in May to enter into a contract with ACS for the installation of a red light camera enforcement program at the intersection of Wooddale Road and Thorndale Avenue. We were also directed at that time to negotiate the, for the contract further with certain limitations, which we successfully were able to complete, and returned back to the manager for his signature in August, early, correction, early September of this year, just recently. There's a little bit of a delay on this program right now, and I'd like to expand on that a little bit fur, expand on that a little bit further. You can proceed two ways with this. One is on an IDOT roadway, and one is on a County of DuPage roadway. We're looking at a County of DuPage roadway. IDOT during the last several months has adopted a standard operating practice for the installation of red light camera enforcement programs at IDOT intersections. Right now, the County of DuPage is entertaining their own standard operating procedures. During the month of August, their transportation committee tabled any further conversation with regards to those SOPs pending further investigation by independent, by committee members. It is due to call, to come back on their agenda in the month of October. I have taken this opportunity to start working one-on-one with some county board members. I met with the chairman of the transportation committee, also a couple of the other members of the committee that are with the, with DuPage County, in an attempt to kind of educate where we're going on this program and to also elevate the importance of this program with regards to not only the City of Wooddale, but also several other police agencies that are looking to institute a similar program, not on IDOT pro, not on IDOT roadways, but DuPage County roadways. We're also attempting to have continually dialogue with other people at the county level to make sure that this gets through. The, as I stated, the program, hopefully the SOPs will be before the county next month, and we've also had a cursory conversation with the county board chairman with regards to this, once it gets out of committee and gets to the county board with regards to the importance of it. So, we're still hoping that we can have this program instituted by the end of the year. We were hoping to have this up and running by the early month, the early portion of November. Because of the SOP at the county level, there will be a little bit of delay, but we are still going forward with this program and making sure that we're getting the support at the county level that we need to be able to do this.
Anybody got any question?
I have a question.
Alderman Shaki? Yeah, I, I, Paul Fitner, county board member contacted me on this on a personal basis by email, and I answered him by saying that I voted for it, and I thought it was important because of the high speeds on Thorndale Avenue, and one of those, what he called a few accidents, was a fatality over there. So, I tried to put a little emphasis in asking him that we do have that available.
Was that prior to Tuesday or after? I met with him on Tuesday.
This was, this was after you had met with him. He mentioned he had met with you and talked to you about it, so it's after.
I think he did get the sense of urgency with regards to the City of Wooddale and the fact that we're looking for support from the county on this.